If we could, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Quapaw Nation Business Committee Special Meeting, Monday, May 24th, 6:00 PM. If we could, please stand for the prayer and call on Mr. Olson to give our invocation, if you could, please.
Bear with me one second, please. Oh, Ocondo Creator, I come to you here at this time, dear Lord, just thanking you for another day. Ask for your blessings today that you might look down on us, take pity on us. Just want to thank you for all the things in this life that you provide us with and just ask that you might help us make good decisions here today and be able to do things for our people that might help them out in a good way. We just want to thank those, all those who came here today. Just ask for my blessing, each and every one of those people who walked through the door and ask that you watch over and be with our mourners today, dear Lord. Just, we've lost people here recently and we can always use your blessings, dear Lord. Just thank you for this day in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Barker, if you could, please.
Jeremy?
Here. Oh, my bad.
Yeah, we'll do this again. Jeremy? Lloyd?
Present.
Michelle?
Here.
Zach is in Wisconsin inspecting ambulances right now. I am here. Callie? Joseph?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. So dropping down to new business. Michael, if you could? Can everyone see this? Good? It's kind of reflective here, but uh, give it a shot. And can everyone on the Zoom platform see this as well? All right, we're seeing what Zoom sees. You see that as well? Uh, we'll go ahead and get started. So we've been tracking and monitoring the American Rescue Plan now for as it's gone through Congress and now it's been signed by the president. And then there's been this lingering question, how much are we going to get? What are the allowable uses and permissible expenditures that are going to fall under this plan? And so we've put this together just as a presentation for today to generate discussion and just make the community more knowledgeable as to what is actually occurring and fixing to happen. So if you could, hit the next slide, please. So just as an overview, the American Rescue Plan Act appropriates $20 billion to tribal governments and provides that $1 billion shall be allocated equally among each of the eligible tribal governments. So roughly 574 federally recognized tribes are going to get a piece of that $1 billion. And then the remaining $19 billion is going to be allocated by a formula that has already been determined by the Secretary of Treasury. Next slide, please. And so as part of this allocation formula for the $19 billion, 65% of the $19 billion, which equates to roughly 12.35 billion, will be distributed based on self-certified tribal enrollment. So our tribal enrollment numbers are a direct result of that. And then the 35% of the $19 billion, roughly 6.65 billion, is going to be distributed based on self-certified tribal employment data. Next slide, please. And so with this first payment, it includes two different calculations. One being an amount in respect to the billion dollar allocation amongst the tribal governments divided equally. And then it also entails tribal government share of our enrollment, so based purely on our enrollment numbers. And the deadline to request this funding was May 24th. We sent the notification and sent off the appropriate documentation to request those funds with Mr. Eric Boone, as well as Guy Barker handling all of the details for that. And then the first payment that we received was $27,725,764.99. And not a penny less. So again, for this first, for this first payment, this entails a portion of the $1 billion that all tribes throughout the country and a greater part of Alaska, all equally distributed amongst tribes. That goes into the amount. And then the second half of that amount is based off of our tribal enrollment data. So combined, what we, what we receive in this first payment totals $27,725,764.99. And if you could save your questions for, after we get through this, I'll be happy to answer as best I can. Next slide, please. So the second payment includes tribal government share of what they're calling the employment allocation. And these are numbers based strictly off of our tribal government, as well as all of our business enterprises. The deadline to confirm employment numbers is actually June 7th, but from what I understand, they're already backing that up two weeks now. So they're pushing that back two weeks since we put this presentation together. They've already made that announcement. And so they're expecting to notify all tribal governments of our employment allocation amount as well. And we'll get to some of those projections, I guess, if we want to go out on a limb and kind of approximate what we can expect off of that second payment. But based off of the first payment, we can definitely go ahead and, and give that solid number today. The second payment's going to be a guesstimation, so just keep that in mind. Next slide, please. So some of the eligible uses for the American Rescue Plan include supporting public health response in terms of how we respond to COVID-19 pandemic, public health needs and long-term effects of the virus, new or enhanced tribal government services that may be needed to meet mental health, substance use, and other behavioral health needs. And then there's a public health and safety staffing component in the overall public health response, what I would call component or pillar of this plan. Next slide, please. As we continue through the eligible uses, one of the other pillars I would call address negative economic impacts. So contained within this allowable uses or eligible uses, you have assistance to unemployed workers and job training, food, housing, cash, and other assistance to households. We have loans and grants, technical assistance to small business owners, and then also assistance for rehiring staff back. Now, we've been competing with state unemployment. And so that's one of those mechanisms where we can rehire staff where, where we need it, where appropriate. Next slide, please. And so the third component or pillar of this plan is, you know, for eligible uses provides equity-focused services. And these services include help to support individuals experiencing homelessness, affordable housing development, educational services like tutoring and after-school programs, and support for social, emotional, and mental health needs, services for child welfare-involved families and foster youth, and early learning services. Next slide, please. And so one of the fourth components of this is to replace tribal government revenue losses, anything that has to do with government services and how we allocate, or I guess, how we handle and respond with our programs and our services. That would fall under that category. And then premium pay for essential employees, staffing at nursing homes, hospitals, and home care settings, workers for farms, food production facilities, grocery stores and restaurants, janitors, sanitation workers, truck drivers, transit staff, and warehouse staff. Those are all considered eligible for classification as an essential employee for the eligible uses part. Another eligible use has to do with infrastructure. So our water, our sewer, all of our systems, our broadband infrastructure. This includes improvements such as building or upgrading facilities and transmission, distribution, storage systems for water and sewer, and then focusing on households and businesses to deliver reliable service via broadband. So some things to consider. Tribes, including Quapaw, have not received official guidance or restrictions on how to use these funds. Right now, they're saying that it'll be 60 days from now until the official guidance is published. So we're still waiting on that to hear back from federal government as to, you know, the allowable uses for this, for these funds. Quapaw has not received its second allocation payment. And so I said earlier, we can expect a second distribution payment later on, probably in another month, I would say. No decision on the funds will be made this evening. Obviously, this is something that we've been anticipating. You know, we know, we knew that it was coming. We didn't really realize the amount that we were going to receive. But one of the very first things that, what was put out there in the interim was that we engage, all tribal governments are encouraged to engage our citizens. And so that's the purpose of why I called this special meeting this evening, is to hear from everyone in attendance, as well as Zoom, to have that opportunity to have your voices heard and how the business committee and the overall tribal government can help better serve the needs of our people. I know that there's talks of per capita or some type of allocation right out of the gate, and I know that some other tribes have already put stuff out there as well. There, there are no bad ideas from this rescue plan. We're entertaining all options. And an allocation for each individual tribal citizen, that's definitely on the table, probably most likely forthcoming. So really, the purpose for tonight is to generate discussion on what other things that we can do, not just in the short term, but also in the long term. We're thinking long-term recovery and how we can better serve not just our needs in the present, but all the future generations that are coming behind us. And so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that we can. But I really just want to just open it up to the floor and have a good discussion tonight, have a good civil discussion on what our options are. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Gannigay.
And when you come to the mic, please state your name for the record.
Is the, the distribution that you mentioned, is that in addition to what program funds have been received, or is that including program funds that have been received?
It wouldn't, I'm trying to think of the best way to word this. We did receive some funds for HUD, for housing and rental assistance. This $27 million sum is in addition, so it's a completely different scoop of money.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm so beat out. Nice to meet everybody. I just have a couple of questions. The, is it the native health? Is that the, what we already have that's going to pay for that? The healthcare?
So native healthcare is our insurance company that is already funded through our gin fund. That would be for things like, we have, oh, I forget the name of the title, the community service health rep that does telemedicine for community, community paramedic. There we go. So things like that. And I know we also contribute to the northeastern tribal health system as a consortium with all of the area tribes as well.
And forgive me if I'm, you know, not knowing what community, what was it? I'm sorry, what was it? Was that, was that healthcare?
Instead of using an ambulance service to go to certain calls, they would use a, this community paramedic to use like a regular vehicle to go to houses to help somebody, you know, whether it be their, you know, blood sugar might be out of whack all the time. So it would save money using the community paramedic to go do that. As far as what I'm understanding on these funds, these funds are funds that are being given to tribes to help us, give us relief. And just one example of like I have, when I read that, the health part, one of the things that comes to mind for me is, and I've been pushing, but like a rehab facility or some kind of facility that either children, women, men, something. And we can build a building and then find the, you know, the money later, whether it's through grants, this program or whatever, but try to sustain it. That would be like an idea, for example.
That was actually one of my suggestions would be something like a drug, you know, drug use for our elders or for children. And I just, so you said that that, of the, thank you. Good, write that down. So for our tribal members, how does that, I don't know, I've never heard of.
From what I'm understanding, and I'm sorry, I could be wrong. I wish Zach was here. This is Zach's baby. He could really explain it. But like if you were to call the emergency service, they would know if you were like a, I don't know, a regular visitor, so to speak, they would know to go ahead and send like a community paramedic based off of the incident, or they would send an ambulance, you know, based off of the severity.
I knew we're getting from the Zoom that nobody can hear your questions.
Oh, really? I don't like to talk into those. I've never been told I'm quiet. So the, one thing I would like to include or to bring more tribal members into is the members that live outside the 50-mile range. You know, I drove four hours to get here today. And it, we get disqualified for almost everything as far as, you know, except for utilities and things like that. But everything else, we don't even qualify for. So a lot of that money, we wouldn't even, not going to contest right off the top. And I would, I think that, I think that's a shame that, you know, the Quapaw, we just because we don't live on.
This money right here, if we were to do a distribution, so to speak, that would not have a radius on it.
So, okay. Any of it.
But, you know, there, there are certain programs where a radius is required, but this is, this is different. So if we were to do some kind of distribution, you know, $1,000 across the board, or whatever it may be, that would not have a radius on it. So it would, you would be qualified for it.
But then there's also the federal programs that we receive from federal grants that still have to have those stipulations on the, the general radius that we, that we observe too.
Hi, I'm Melinda McFarland. I'm one of the Marty Griffin's daughters. I've got, we have actually two Quapaw girls that got fired during the COVID because they would not, were wearing the cloth masks. How could this help? They were working in a nursing home and they got fired for wearing a cloth mask. And one of their deal is, or aid was, didn't want to scare the residents and try to scuff it off. They'd been pretty much without a job until just recently. How could this help them get upon their feet?
Well, part of the programming here, Alec, says that ineligible use is to help rehiring staff specifically in the public health sector. So that could qualify, but we don't have a nursing home. So aside from that, we could try to give a recommendation to Northeast Tribal Health System. We have our own clinic at the downstream. It depends, I don't know, these individuals or their background, what exactly they're qualified for, their resume.
Is this money to like to help out people like that, to allocate? To, I mean, because we've all had hardships from this. I mean, that's just two samples of hardships. I mean, other, some of us has had water pipes busted and we've had all kinds of issues that doesn't exactly, 500 from emergency assistance doesn't exactly cover.
Sure.
So, you know, so that's why some of us were kind of like wanting a per capita and everything, because this would help us out. Because I mean, like I said, we, I got, we've got two, two tribal members I know of. They're younger, Sades, and they're just now, just now got jobs, just, they're here just recently and everything. And they're still haven't quite got off, gotten up off their feet from this right here. I mean, so that's why some of us was, you know, looking at, for cap and everything. I mean, do we have to file for why we need it? I mean, could that be some of the criterias?
It would be similar to how we did it last time. You would have to fill out the form. You would, there's guidelines. It would be on that form, and then you would turn it in to let out. It'd be the same kind of process like we've done the last two times.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm seriously, really true. We've got a lot of people that are out there hurting. Not everybody goes to casino and put money in the machine. Some of us actually, we actually are in the trenches, you might say, or working and we're in the trenches. So that's why it's kind of like, that's what my view would be, would, we would need some in a per cap just to help us, like these two nieces. I mean, they are Quapaw children.
Melinda, I, I think that on an individualized basis for assistance to tribal members, I think that everybody in this room and everybody sitting up here is in agreement that there's going to be per cap assistance in some form or fashion. You know, and I think that's, that's really what the chairman had addressed earlier, that, that we're going to be able to provide, you know, financial assistance. And we understand that everybody's circumstances are different, whether it, loss of job from an issue like, you know, a problem with a mask, or, you know, from furlough, or that they didn't get called back. We understand that those are touching and affecting everybody. So as a result, I mean, there will be a per cap distribution on it. Like, I don't, I don't know that that's even something that anybody is going to argue back and forth here. Now, there will be a form to fill out because the treasury requires us to collect certain information from individuals that request individual financial assistance. You know, that's just checking boxes that we have to fill out just because everybody has certain guidelines that they have to, they have to hit. So, you know, the, I think we agree with you, everybody agrees with you, that there's, there's definitely going to be a per cap. I think there's also permissible uses for this though, and, and there's even required uses for this, these funds that, you know, I think that unemployment aid is definitely flying around all over the place right now, but that would be a permissible use. You know, if we have issues with people, individual hardship of being able to find jobs, get jobs, I mean, one, we could help from a tribal basis, we're always hiring. But then two, you know, if it's outside the radius, you live farther away, you know, this is why we're having this discussion. So if there's some suggestion for enhanced help for unemployment, then, then that's a suggestion that we're happy to take, you know? And so that's, that's the whole purpose of this open dialogue and open discussion.
One other thing is, is these kids need a nice playground or a pool or something to keep them out of trouble, a skate park, something to keep them, when you're living in Quapaw, there's nothing out here. And it would be nice to have something for these kids.
I agree. I'm definitely going to have to check the guidelines on a swimming pool because we might get in trouble for that one, but.
I mean, these kids need something.
We agree.
I grew up out here and, you know, if it wasn't for our horses, it wasn't for some of our cousins and everything, but these kids need something to keep them out of getting into a lot of the trouble that's going on around these days. But a park or pool or.
A rec center.
Yes.
Multicultural center.
Exactly. You know, that would be really nice in, in the summertime, a little more than a week or two, but that's, they even wear some crafts. I mean, I ain't saying that right there because we just, we all do crafts. But there's a lot of children that do not. They don't know how to tie shawls. They don't know how to make chokers. I mean, some of us, we learned to do that when we were six years old, but there's a lot that don't know that. And that would be, you know, some cultural activities that actually not just the Quapaw, as, just the Quapaw children, but just the children in the area in general that are, that want to participate. That would be some of my views. I would be just kind of off the top of head. Gannigay, thank you.
Gannigay.
So not far from the 50-mile range.
I'm being requested to request you to speak into the microphone.
Okay. I'm not used to having that. So on the 50-mile range, just a suggestion, I know Oklahoma City used to have a counseling service there, a Quapaw Counseling Services. I mean, maybe like a location somewhere in central Tulsa of Oklahoma City where, you know, we could be included, you know, if we needed some type of counseling or something like that. On the, I guess I just kind of want to say, as a Quapaw tribal member, you know, I grew up being on the, on the tribal grounds and my dad, I remember him fighting way back years ago for basically the same things that we're asking for today, only the dollar amount wasn't there as it is today. I kind of feel like I drove four hours to get here and, I mean, I don't, I don't know of anything that I learned. I mean, I don't know, I don't feel any better than, than I did before. I know I come across sometimes as a little blunt, and I don't mean to be, I just don't know how to say things other than to just say, you know, what's, what's in my heart. And I feel like the Quapaw people have been real patient with the amount of money that we bring in, the casinos that we have, the grants that are given, the dollar amount, and we're still waiting in line. There's a lot of people here that, that are hurting. I'm one of them financially, that we don't know how to, going to make it to the next paycheck or, you know, or pay the electric or buy food. And the Quapaw tribe has enough that there shouldn't be one of us that has to worry about that. And I just don't, I feel like John Barry took advantage of us enough, and I, I just feel like it's our turn. Because if it weren't for us, there would, none of this wouldn't be here, even, even Bear, Good Eagle, and all of it. And I just feel like maybe there's too much, even when we get the doll, you know, this funding, we, there's still so many things that we as tribal members, it's like we're last in line, the communities, you know, which I wanted to help everybody, but I want to help our people first. And I just feel like it's our turn. I just wanted to say that. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Away, my name is Grant. Um, mine is more of a statement than a question. Gosh, it was just, uh, how great it is to be native. Proud, thank you all for everything. Today is a good day. I want to break the ice and get some smiles because we, uh, this is great news. Yeah. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Treasury. Thank you, everybody. God bless you all.
Thank you.
I have an Alicia King on Zoom who'd like to say something.
Hi, yes, I'm Alicia King. Um, I guess my concern was what I had, I guess a question with, you know, there's, there's always been problems with housing and, and helping people that are not in the 50 yard or 50 mile radius. And, you know, yeah, there was money put out last time for people that rent. But, you know, there's a lot of more people that don't rent that have the same money going out every month. So just because you don't own a home, I mean, you shouldn't get penalized for owning it. And it's like the people that own homes get left out of, of any help. And then you can't get help from the tribe because of the radius on getting any help with getting things fixed or anything like you would need. I mean, unfortunately, you know, the tribal grounds is in an area that is not great for, you know, work. And most people can't live there. And I just feel like the people that don't live there do get left out. You know, we don't get to come to all the children programs because we live too far out. We can't afford to go. We couldn't afford to drive an hour and a half back and forth every day. You know, so like even this summer, you know, which is great for the kids that they get to go to the camp. Well, my grandkids don't get to do that because I can't afford to drive three hours a day to bring them to camp. So, I mean, I just feel like there's, there's more that needs to be done for people that do live out of the 50 mile radius. I'm right at 69 miles away, but it's not 50 miles. So everything is no. And I feel like that's a huge problem within the tribe. And that's, that's my question statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Copper. Uh, my question is on the medical. Is that going to help subsidize what the insurance does not cover? Example, I have grandchildren that wear hearing aids. Okay, it doesn't cover that. My daughter is a single parent and trying to come up with money for hearing aids is quite difficult. She makes too much money to get on state help, but the Indians don't help her either. So is that extra money that they're getting going to help with the extra things medically that it won't cover?
I would say that hearing aids falls directly in line with some of those eligible uses that are going to be coming from the plan.
That was my question.
Thank you.
I have a Michael on Zoom who'd also like to speak.
Can anybody hear me? Hello, my name is Michael Mouse. I am one of Marty's Griffins grandchildren. Uh, you know, I'm way out of the 50 mile radius and I asked for help not too long ago. And I was also denied. And I had to, I had to shell out at least two grand to fix my pipes because that busted during that last freeze. And I was denied the help that I needed. And I, sadly, I don't rent, I own. I mean, is it, is there any way that the tribe can help us when situations like that, uh, that come? I mean, it's, it's frustrating. I agree with Alicia King on this too. You know, it's, it's sad that tribal members within the 50 mile radius gets more substantial help than the tribal members that don't live within that 50 mile radius. I feel like we're more penalized than anybody else is.
So just as a baseline for most of these programs that the tribe receives, there are restrictions, um, where we have to adhere to that 50 mile radius. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, and that's not just Quapaw, but every single tribe has to adhere to those federal guidelines. But with this plan, we'll definitely take a look at whether or not there's a 50 mile radius requirement. I haven't heard that being one of the limitations to eligible uses at this point. But we'll be gladly, we'll gladly consider that, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Mado.
See you.
Courtney, again, how is that determined?
So a lot of the funds that we receive for housing assistance on a generalized basis, whether it come from Nahazda, HUD, every single one of those, similar to this funding that we get, comes with guidelines, what we can and cannot do. Every single time that they attach funding to it, they gives us, there's strings attached to it. So that 50 mile radius may not be a tribal policy. It may not be anybody sitting up here that has decided to put a 50 mile circle on it. But it may have been HUD, could have been Nahazda. They could put 100 miles on it, they could put 25 miles on it. I mean, they draw a line in the sand somewhere. So we can certainly, if, if there's not a distance restriction on this in terms of housing, because again, we haven't gotten the final guidelines. We've just gotten sort of indications of what it's going to look like. And.
I apologize, maybe.
No, it's, it's okay. But, I mean, and, and I think that it's, it's a good question to, to clarify too, you know, because, you know, uh.
Who does that, that guideline? Is it the federal government on?
Yeah, it would be the. Yeah, federal government puts a, puts that guideline on every, every dollar that they give to us has permissible uses, yes. So whether it's a grant or whether it's Nahazda or HUD, any, any federal, uh, agency that's giving us those money, giving us those funds, whatever, they, they send it and then they send in a stack of guidelines that come with it. And it may sit in there and say 50 mile radius.
Right.
So at that point in time, we can't violate any of those guidelines that we get because it will disqualify us from future funding, so.
So I, that brings me to another, something else I'd like to ask about is, because that's basically on everything, every benefit that we have. So I guess I need to, I mean, I, I, again, please, please don't think I'm trying to be disrespectful because I'm not, I respect both of you, all of you. Okay, I just want that, I want you to know that. What is the tribe doing for us? Because that is a guideline on everything. What is, what is the tribe doing for us, for the members? I mean, because that, I guess, Michael, you know, I don't know what, what we're.
I think that's the point of this discussion right here is we want your input. We want to know what the needs are. So, you know, we're, we're kind of trying to lay out what, what minimal guidelines they've given us.
No, that's not, I, I don't know, maybe I'm not making, saying it right. We have all this money, but you guys are telling us that you can't tell us anything because the government hasn't said anything. But tonight we hear that you got the money and then later on in the meeting, you didn't get the money.
We got the money. I'm telling everyone, we have the money.
We got the first of two payments. We're waiting on the second payment to come.
Sorry.
We've received, we've received the first round of funding. The, the funding from this act is coming in two, two different installments. We've received the first installment and with that installment, they sent us what they called the interim guidelines. They're not the final guidelines, the most, or the ones that are written in stone. They said that we can expect those within a 60 day time period. But they've given us their interim guidelines of this is what they're going to look like in some form or fashion so that you as a tribal government can start planning what you're going to do with these funds. Also, the patch in there says you need to get tribal member involvement. Some tribes haven't done that. This was really important for us so that we could have this discussion right here. So understand, you know, everybody's situation is different. Everybody's been impacted by this pandemic differently, you know? And we would like to hear what people's individual needs are. That way, when we get those final guidelines are, get those final guidelines, we'd love to be able to fund and remedy every one of these hardships that we can that fits within those guidelines.
I'm not hearing that tonight, I'm sorry. And, and I, you know, I, again, no disrespect meant, I, I mean, uh, because I'm here and we're going to have to wait until, we want to hear what you guys have to say. But it really, I mean, what the government tells us to do is what we're going to do. So I, I guess, I mean, my question isn't about what, um, the government is going to do and what is the tribe going to do for, I mean, you guys got the money. But we're, I mean, we're, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm not making myself clear enough.
Well, the ultimate goal, you know, and this is kind of veering off the track here, but the ultimate goal is to get ourselves out of debt. And as soon as we get ourselves out of debt, we're going to be set. We're going to be able to take care of everybody. But that's, that's going to take five to 10 years. And I could be wrong in saying that.
Okay, so that brings me to a new question, so.
But the money here we're discussing today is the money that the government is giving us with all these strings attached. So we're trying to sit down with our tribal members. And get the involvement and find out what the need is. We've already covered distributions going to happen. We're all for it. But now we've still got more money, you know, that we can use. What do we want to use it for? You know, I, I can sit here and spit out a whole bunch of ideas that are going to help our people for generations to come, but it's, it's beyond the distribution. So I want to, this is just me personally, I want to do a big distribution for everybody, but then I want to take the rest of that money and I want to invest it in our infrastructure.
You know what? And again, I'm, I don't mean any disrespect, but I'm so over the casinos. We don't benefit from it. We don't benefit.
But that right there, the casinos are what brings to our general fund so we can pay for utilities. You know, 120, no, it's not, no, no. $125,000 comes from Quapaw Casino every single month that goes towards utilities.
$25,000.
That's just Quapaw Casino. And then Downstream Casino gives us, well, it's $10 million a year. And all that money is allocated to programs. And that's, we're stuck to that now.
Unless you're 50 miles out.
No, no, not on, not on that. This is coming out of general funds.
I, I, I mean, I agree, I mean, I, you guys, we do it a lot for, but there's also so many guidelines on this money or any of the programs that we have, that 90% of us get knocked out of it anyway. And so where does that money go? For another casino? Again, no disrespect meant, this is my first meeting that I've, that I've attended. I just feel like the Quapaw people deserve more than what they get. Whether it be respect, whether it be, uh, money, whether it be, it don't have to be cashed. Do something for our people, not what the government tells you. That's, that's been our problem since 1700s. Doing what the government tells us to do, I mean, to a point, to a point. I mean, they can put all these, say all these.
We have to follow a lot of rules.
Okay, thank you. Fossey Matthews, I just had some questions because I know, I heard you say something about buildings. And I know we own land, uh, right by the opening of the, from the turnpike. So I would like to see us to have a restaurant, you know, and there that would be open all night, that would draw in fun. And, um, nothing has ever been done when, um, Mark Dunn bought that land for us and then he screwed us around. But, uh, true. So I would like something to be done with that land. And then I know in Quapaw, we have a lot of Quapaw people that live there. And I saw the other day that when I drove through Quapaw, that, uh, that one little restaurant that has sandwiches and all, that they now have a gas station there. So why don't we buy some of that land and put in a grocery store that used to be there? And I'm sure it did very good business. So I'm thinking in the future, which I probably won't be around for that, you know, five or 10 years. So that'll put me over the barrel. But, uh, no, I just want us to do something that will benefit my great grandchildren or the great, great grandchildren that I won't see. So that's my idea.
Fossey, um, I think that those are great ideas. I already beat you to it though, because I've got them in the works. But, um, we're trying to put together a feasibility studies and get architectural designs put together for a grocery store in Quapaw. It'll be a grocery store, cafe, and hopefully moving the coffee roasters down from, out of Missouri, I don't know why we're even there, um, down into Quapaw. Um, we're also looking at permissible uses for that land down there just off the turnpike. Uh, right now, the prevailing idea is a travel center with a cafe or restaurant inside. But, so, um, but we are, we're working on the, I had, I don't know that those, that construction will qualify, but again, you're going to have to wait for the guidelines. So, but if it can, then we'll definitely put it to work.
And can we use part of that money to pay off our casino downstream?
No.
That's the one, there's, there's a few things that they don't allow, and that is one of them that they do not allow.
Oh, okay.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion by a tribal member that sent me a message. They would like to see an assistant living center built for our elders, which is something that's always kind of been a passion of mine as well, um, for elders, so.
I have three more on Zoom to have asked me to ask the questions for them. First is from a Caroline. She wants to know if any of this can go to education. She says, one of the stimulus checks that came out last year for college students did not apply to them.
Yeah, so, um, in the area of education, we as native communities experience some of the most disparaging, we, we are significantly impacted when it comes to our education, uh, especially in rural, more rural communities. That is one of the eligible uses on one of those pillars that I discussed is, um, certain educational allocations. Uh, a lot of it had to do with, uh, early childhood. Uh, but then there's also other programs, after school programs, maybe some type of like a, I'm not going to say a boys and girls club, but something similar to that, something of that nature. But then there's also a broad, uh, range of flexibility that tribal governments can utilize for education specific goals. So we're going to look at that as well. Uh, and then also in that same vein is, uh, language preservation. And that's pretty significant right now.
Second, I have a Jesse who. Second, I have a Jessie who also resides outside the 50 mile radius. And she has a similar question, but she's wondering for those who rent, if there could be any relief sent their way.
Yeah, so, um, I think under the criteria of combating homelessness and assisting with households that were impact, negatively impacted economically, financially, that also falls under the eligible uses. So we'll be considering that as well. Outside, outside of the 50 mile radius if permissible.
And then the third person is Connie Moore. She'd like to speak.
Hello, my name's Connie Moore and I live in Kansas City. My father passed several years ago and he was a member of the tribe, Quapaw Nation. He was not one to speak much about what went on because he was assimilated to the, to white men's rules and guidelines going to the Indian schools. I've been trying for several years, I talked to John Barry and Tamara, et cetera, trying to find references that would give me more information about my heritage. I am a, I like to bead, I, I bead jewelry, but I can't seem to find anybody that can lead me to what the Quapaw beading might have looked like. I'm just wondering if the, and the language, you know? He didn't speak it around us, so I don't, I mean, I've been to all the general council meetings for many, many years, but, and I, I have some of it, but for my children and grandchildren, I would like to be able to know where I can get those resources, where I can find that information. I've made several trips to Downstream, paid to stay overnight to go to classes at the museum, and I thoroughly enjoy those, but with the pandemic, you know, a lot of that was cut off. Uh, and a lot of times those classes are set up and I think they're filled before anybody outside of the Quapaw area finds out about them. So I need some assistance or I would like to see something that would help people that aren't in that area learn more about our heritage.
Uh, thank you Connie, and I definitely, for, I for one appreciate those statements. Uh, just kind of as a background, once, uh, the pandemic happened in March and we started restricting access to all of our buildings and our businesses. Not only did the programming through the library and the museum, uh, cease, but then also, uh, meetings, uh, whether it was elder committee or cultural committee, uh, kinda had to take those precautions and they're literally, um, as far as the cultural committee, they're just now opening the meetings back up. Uh, we've since opened up our museum and our libraries and, uh, met with a few of the staff there, uh, and you know, there's talks of, um, reopening our programs, uh, for, uh, language, for cultural preservation, uh, that kind of stuff. And now that we have the option to make it available on Zoom, uh, definitely committed to working out the kinks of, you know, delivering that to folks that maybe are unable to make the trip all the way to Quapaw. And if it's, if it's something that we can pursue and do, uh, online with Zoom, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, push that along. But overall with language and culture and education, that is definitely, it all ties back up into one of those eligible uses for this funding. And we're gonna be considering what we can do with those funds when it comes to those, uh, issues.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. About a language app?
I also would like to say, I like Family Dollar, Dollar General. Okay, that's one things I like right there. And it would be nice to have one here in Quapaw. But, uh, what about a store where we can get beads, leather, needles, things like that right there, a trade, uh, trading post or something like that where we can buy? Cause a lot of us have to go through Crazy Crow. You gotta go through Crazy Crow or it was, uh, Gray Owl, I think it is, is the other one we go through. And it would be nice to be able to come here rather than have to order or go somewhere to get Shaw friends, Shaw material, um, you know, the specific kind of material that we do, we use for cultural crafts or for regalia and stuff like that. It would be nice to have a place local to come to, a trading post or something like that. That would be something that would be for the future and for us now at the same time.
I agree, I like that idea.
I think, Courtney, now, um, and I appreciate the opportunity to, for us to be able to come and, and give us, give you guys, you know, some of our ideas. I'd like to hear some of your ideas, what you guys are, you, you, you considering. But I, I mean, I'm, what are some of your, what do you guys, what are you all considering?
I want to hear yours first, Courtney. I want to hear your ideas.
I've got some ideas, but I live outside the 50 mile range. No, kidding, I'm kidding. I'm, I'm kidding. Actually, I mean, I heard, actually, I heard on, online the other day, some people were talking about doing, uh, marijuana bro, enterprise and there's a lot of money in that. I mean, the state, state's making several million off of it.
So to clear that one up unfortunately, so we're on, we are on federal Indian trust land here, so we're beyond the jurisdiction of the state. Whether or not we can actually enter into the cannabis industry is subject to the prosecutorial discretion of the US Attorney of the Northern District. Historically speaking, the US Attorney has made it very clear to not only Quapaw, but there's a reason why you don't see, uh, cannabis operations at other tribes is that they've made it very clear that it's their federal jurisdiction, it is still federally illegal, and if you try to engage in that industry, you will be prosecuted. So until attitudes change or till, um, US Attorney's Office becomes more progressive on their outlook on that particular industry, unfortunately, that's, that's a non-starter for us.
So, I mean, is there gonna be, we had this meeting, are, is there gonna be?
How about a testing facility? How about a testing facility? I mean, there's more than one entry port on the supply chain when it comes to cannabis. Yeah, testing facility, instead of us carrying or assuming the liability of growing or selling, we could just be testing.
I think they should test it. I don't think it's.
Just to fun.
Oh, yeah, oh. Yeah, I, I wouldn't be a good tester, obviously.
Oh, no, no.
I think, uh, I don't think anybody up here will be sampling it or testing it. I think he's talking about the, the, the chromatic machine.
An entire facility dedicated to da- data and statistics of the makeup, the chemical makeup. Just to clarify.
One more thought. Could we do something like have a self-help legal with a paralegal to help people do some of the legal stuff? Cause lawyers are incredibly outrageously expensive. And if you're poor and you have something simple you need help with, they want $300 to look at you. But if you can get, sorry, yeah, I know you guys are lawyers, but, but if you can just get a paralegal to kind of help you fill out your own paperwork, get the wording right, that would be so helpful for some of the poorer people that can't afford, you know, the outrageous fees.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I guess to also piggyback on that suggestion, so we have Oils or Oklahoma Indian Legal Services, um, we're trying to set up a will's clinic. These are traveling attorneys that go around and help native communities, uh, at, at no cost, you know, in order to help get your, uh, legal needs kind of in arrears. And we're gonna be trying to have them come up and do several clinics this summer. Uh, we're also working on trying to set up, um, a kind of on-demand, uh, what they call, um, on-demand legal clinic through Oklahoma City University School of Law, my alma mater. Um, we're, I've been talking with their department down there and trying to make it available that way when we come in, we can make this service available through the Quapaw Nation Courts. So if somebody comes in and they have an issue to where I need a will prepared, you know, uh, I need the ability to, uh, put together a trust or, and make sure that all of my trust property is properly handed down to this child or that child or divided equally. We should be able to liaise that through the tribal nation court or through the Quapaw Nation Court with Oklahoma City University School of Law, where they will help put all those things together free of cost to tribal members. So we, we are working on it and it is, it's in its infancy at the moment, but we are working on getting a, a will's clinic up here several times this summer and then trying to get something, a more permanent solution like what you suggested, so thank you, no.
Uh, something along the same line as, uh, the possibility of having like a, maybe a healthcare advocate or a tribal elder advocate or some type of advocate that helps, uh, tribal members, uh, fill out the documentations for programs and for services. Uh, that's, that's an eligible use in the plan as well. To answer your question, I'd like to tuck $10 million in an endowment and leave it alone for about four years and then, uh, make it accessible to our children and our youth.
Fossey Matthews again. Uh, I would like to see, and my son is the one, Perry Matthews is the one that brought this up, is that when you go to get your gas, you have to go inside, you know, to get it all sorted. So Sam's has a program that you just go in and put your card in and it already deducts it for you. So I would like to see the Quapaw tribe get us a card that we can just stick it in and write out our receipt and it's all legally done.
So a tribal gas card?
Yes.
That gets replenished every summer? And usable anywhere or just our convenience stores?
Well, I think anywhere.
Okay.
So anywhere and especially around here, you know? So it's for our people.
Okay.
I have four more people who would like me to present something to you from Zoom and one who wants to speak. The first I have, Alicia King. She is also wondering about a rehab center that can keep inpatient and house them for a certain period of time until they can get a job. The second I have from Shawna Coler, Clear. Forgive me for saying your name there. Uh, she would like to see some scooters purchased to keep at Downstream for the elderly and handicapped members when they come to meetings there.
How many?
She didn't say how many, but it looks like she's specifically asking for her mother. And then we have Michael also would like to know, are we already planning to do things specifically for the elders? And then Michael Matthews would like to know if any of these funds can be used to provide a seed for a native credit union or bank.
I like that idea. Uh, Quapaw Nation Tribal Bank would be pretty awesome.
And then finally I have Elizabeth Griffin who would like to speak.
I didn't have anything to say, I was just talking on the, uh, the Libra Brain Research, libra.com has, where people could join, but it's just research, like the marijuana, I just commented, I was like, and then I bumped the key on raising my hand, I apologize.
So, um, to kind of answer, uh, the rehab for the inpatient rehab facility, uh, one of the eligible uses that's specifically contained, uh, in the language here, uh, says that it's for new or enhanced tribal government services that may be needed, uh, to meet mental health, substance use and other behavioral needs, uh, as well as public health and safety staffing. So again, that is definitely one of the eligible uses for, for these funds.
I was just gonna say something. I'm Bill Griffin. Uh, and I'm on the cultural committee. And, uh, I was hoping, you know, there'd be some more members here, but I have some ideas, you know, I was gonna throw out to them. And, uh, we was talking about the language. If we could get, uh, start out young, you know, daycare, maybe, uh, have stories in Quapaw language and then have it translated and, you know, basic stuff, you know, just for early years, so a day. And then, uh, maybe have somebody come in and, uh, tell them stories. You know, teach them a little bit of history of our traditions and our culture. I'd have to get the rest of the, the committee. I was hoping there'd be more here, but, uh, I have some more ideas, you know, I've been thinking, you know? Uh, that's not all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Okay. And those are all, um, good items for discussion, language, stories, specifically with early childhood, uh, elementary age. All of the, all of those are good, good recommendations, so thank you.
Something else that has just been really, I'm trying to think of something, but we really need to do more for our veterans as well.
Karen Hildreth. And I would like to see with our elders, I know there's one in particular, and I don't want to call a name out, but, who has fell two times that I know of lately, where they laid out in their yard. And I would like to see a life alert being provided to our people that live in the elder housing if they so want it. Because I do think it's a need, they don't always have their phone with them. Because I do think it's a need. They don't always have their phone with them. And I know they can yell, but nobody can hear them. So I would, I really have a concern for that.
That's a great idea. I think it needs to be beyond just our elder housing, just our elders in general.
Yeah, just back there.
Wherever they live.
Yeah. So anyway, that was my idea with maybe some of this funding.
Good idea. Thank you. Any other thoughts, ideas? Come on, Brent. Surely you got something to say. An urgent care facility? Tribal employee clinic? Our own pharmacy?
I have another question from Jessie. She's wondering the possibility for a counselor available for tribal members to be able to contact with Zoom.
I'm not so sure that can't happen now. Yeah, we may, that may actually be a service we already do.
Hello, I'm Jerry Montgomery. I just have a question. Are we able as tribal members to use the clinic at Downstream for $5? Like employees are? Because nobody knows.
Why not? Sorry. To my knowledge, we've made it very clear to, you know, there's a partnership with, is it Freeman or Integris?
Freeman.
Freeman, okay. So we have a partnership with Freeman over there at the clinic. We've made it pretty apparent to them that we're going to try and start extending those services, not just to downstream employees, but also to tribal member employees, or sorry, just tribal members, excuse me. The biggest one was COVID testing immediately was what, what really needed to be provided. You know, we, we did have the machine that allowed us to do the rapid result test for COVID-19. I think that we're going to try and start extending that to generalized visits as well. I know that we had the discussion with them. I have to admit that I'm, I'm not terribly certain right now where we're at in terms of the onboarding process of, of being able to get that going.
When they get that finalized, can you send it out like a newsletter or something to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, my daughter came, had had an idea for, I don't know if this COVID money we cover or not, but for a sports complex for baseball teams or softball teams. Because there's so many kids around that play that. And it would be good for the kids at Quapaw and Wyandotte, I mean, all the, the whole area. Because there's very few of them around, right, you know, locally. And Miami is, is nice, but it gets so muddy and stuff whenever they have a lot of rain. And she had thought maybe a sports complex type thing, you know? Even out by the casino, all that land we've got out there, it might be a good place for it. There's a Arkansas tribe that they went to a Sports Adele. And she said it was phenomenal the way it was set up, all the things that they had for the kids.
I think it's a great idea. We'll have to, you know, get further guidance, I guess as time goes on. You know, there's a big push for education. I don't know where extracurricular activities fall within kind of permitted uses. I know that there's a big push for enhancing access to technology or broadband with, you know, remote learning being such a massive requirement as a result of this pandemic. You know, making sure that kids have a tablet or a laptop or something that they can be able to interface on, you know, in a video chat with their teachers is, I think, probably their would, gonna be one of like their biggest priorities on, on educational funding. But we'll just have to see, you know, so I think if it, if it's there, we can certainly try. Thank you.
Ossie Matthews again. So I would like to see, you know, a, a list of who all are on the committees. I received a letter from the Constitution Committee, but who's on it? Joseph?
We'll get you a list.
Not for me, but for our people. And also I would like to see-
I think it's on the website, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't always get there, so.
It will be displayed at General Counsel as well.
Okay. And also I would like to see an attorney hired for the grievance committee because they had grievances and they needed an attorney. And so that would help our people and also our, I don't know what's all on the Constitution, you know? I'd like to read what ever has been written before we get to General Counsel.
And you will. There are, there are plans to, that's still in the beginning phases. We have our Constitution Committee members selected. They've been meeting. They usually meet every Saturday via Zoom after the BC meeting, the regularly scheduled BC meeting. But they have been meeting regularly and they've been taking lots of notes. They went through a program, third party, that we brought on to give kind of a rundown of our tribal government and look at ideas for restructuring that across departments. But then also on the, on the government document is they, the approach that they decided to take was to figure out what needs needed to be met from our people and then also general discussions on what they'd like to see our tribal government look like, our elected officials and the responsibilities and duties that we have to adhere to and carry out. And then also the rights that are protected for each individual citizen as tribal members as well. So that's kind of what the idea of the survey is being conducted at this point. And that's part of the process to have community buy-in and community engagement from all of our citizens to make sure that everyone's voices are heard in this living, breathing document. So we definitely plan on communicating that out. It'll definitely be, it, it won't just be like we show up at General Counsel and we're going to vote on it. You're, you're going to have the opportunity to see it well beforehand.
Thank you.
Again.
I'm Debbie Ray, once again. On May the 12th, the FCC sent out the EBV, which is the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. And that program is for everyone, however, there are guidelines and stipulations. Could some of this money be used to basically mirror that to where there wouldn't be guidelines? So that would be eligible to all tribal members?
I don't know.
And for those that are not familiar with the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program that the FCC started taking applications on, it's for, towards internet usage, laptop devices, there's a certain amount of funds that are available, but there are some stipulations for those. But I was wondering, you know, like with this money, could you mirror that to where there's probably tribal members that don't qualify for the EBV? That they could maybe get the same benefit through the tribe with the education side of it?
Based upon the interim guidance that we've got, that there's, they've definitely allocated or have some guideline attached to software and broadband enhancement. So I'm sure that there will be some guidelines, whether they'll be more permissive or more restrictive than the EBV. I'm not sure yet. We'll have to get some, you know, further clarification as time goes on. But I think it's certainly something that we can look into.
I, I guess my question would be on the, on the 27 million. Is there any kind of stipulation, anything set up to where your, that this money can be, can be used to pay off the casino?
No.
Not at all?
That is one of the limitations that are expressly included in the interim ruling. No payment to any type of debt. No payment to any type of pensions. And there's a couple other limitations there as well. But specifically, when it comes to our gaming debt, no, we can't.
I understood that, that part of it was based on employment through the tribe. It's, I guess would be important to start businesses. I mean, is a, are a lot of this, a lot of the funding, is it based on how many employees we have at different?
So that, that's the second round of funding that'll be coming, I guess, in, it's probably looking like towards the end of July. And that was the, I guess, the second half of their formula that they, they put together, the third part of their formula they put out. That there is an allocation there that is based upon prorata data, based upon how many employees are employed by the tribe and its business entities. That it does actually though include the number of employees, say, at our, our gaming properties, which is quite a lot. There is something, there are some things that we're going to have to do lobbying wise, at least up in Washington. We are in a very different situation than the rest of Indian country from the standpoint that we are the only tribal government in the United States that opened a gaming property during the pandemic. And the the formula specifically states that it wants employment data from 2019. Well, we took on 800 more employees during 2020. So the big, well, it's, the, the funding on it is to incentivize employee retention. So my argument is going to be, at least to the federal agencies and, and our senators and, and reps is that if you are going to go and provide a financial incentive to not only retain employees, there should also be an incentive to bringing on additional employees. Because our total number of employees and people that work for the tribe itself grew by almost, wow, 80%. I mean, we brought on another 800 employees or somewhere around 2,600 employees for the tribal nation now. So we brought on quite a few. And so we're in a different circumstance than any other tribe in the country. And so we're going to at least seek or heavily encourage that we get some sort of exception to the allocation or how they've tried to use employment data from 2019 and ask for an exception that we go ahead and use 2020 data. At least in our situation.
This is funding, this, the 27 is for the 27, 2020 though, right? It's not going to go off the 2019 numbers?
Okay, so the 27 is, is the amount of money that we've received in the first, first funding allocation. This will get, come with specific guidelines attached to it, kind of like what we presented earlier. Things like education, hazard pay, governmental revenue replacement, you know, community building, rental assistance, education, or, you know, employment assistance or even individual assistance to tribal members. The next round of money is going to be meant, and I'm sure that they're going to have some very big shackles on it. But it will be specifically intended for employee retention, which is why they're asking for all of our employment data. So the total number of employees that we have working for the tribe and its entities.
And can any business that, that a Quapaw member has themselves, can their employees be counted on that?
No, so it's, it's employees working directly for the tribe or for businesses, business entities owned by the tribe itself. So you could say like QSA, our gas stations, Quapaw Casino, Downstream, Saracen, the cattle processing plants, you know, any, any of these subsidiary entities and businesses that we, that we have owned by the tribe itself. Unfortunately, it doesn't allow us to include employee data from businesses owned by individual tribal members.
The only other thing I, I would, would like to see is something, and I don't even know what it would be, to get our members more acquainted with each other and bring us back as a tribe somehow. I don't know how that would be. I mean, I don't, but our, but our children.
We have a memorial dinner on Saturday. That's everybody's invited to.
Right? I mean, the last, because I think you, you, we were going to have a dinner for you guys when, when you were elected. You know, everybody was pretty excited about that. Is that the replacement of that dinner or?
No, every year, the tribe hosts a memorial dinner. It just so happens we had to postpone this last one for relative passing.
Right, right. I, I understand that. I mean, but that's once a year. I mean, there's, because we've, as tribal members, especially our children, don't know, my grandkids anyway. I mean, I, I grew up on the Quapaw power grounds and, and all of this right here. And it just seems like we're getting further apart and further away from tradition. And with tradition, do you think we'll ever go back to where the members of vote or get to vote on any of, you know, like major, you know, back in the day? Decisions and where the funding went and what they wanted to do, say, if you had five things that you wanted to do with this money and we took a vote on, you know, the importance of it or any tribal members will ever be able to get on that?
To me, tribal members still have a opportunity to do exactly what you're talking about during General Counsel. So they can-
Like an actual vote?
It is an actual vote. So during General Counsel, every year we have individual tribal members. So I guess to be clear, you know, the Business Committee holds and hosts a meeting every month for the Business Committee to conduct its business. But once a year, the General Counsel hosts their own meeting. We just get to sit there and help steer it, but it is your meeting. It is tribal members' meeting. It gives them the opportunity to bring resolutions, make suggestions for creating committees, building a building, building this center, spending money this way, all the things that you're describing. So it's, it gives our tribal members their opportunity to come in and really steer the direction of the tribe. And so that's, that, that, that's, that does, that does still exist. And we're setting a date where we are having General Counsel as, as normally scheduled this year, again, on July 4th. So.
Right, right. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. However, it doesn't seem like it's like I, I would like to know more about what the committees do or what they decide on or what they, you know, what they, the Constitution Committee. I don't know what that really, I don't know what their purpose is. I mean.
They're going to be sending, the Constitution Committee is going to be sending out information to everybody to get their input on building a constitution and that's going to take some time and there, it's going to be snail mail and electronic mail and it's in the works. So you should be seeing some information coming from the Constitution Committee soon. it's in the works. So you should be seeing some information coming from the Constitution Committee soon. Um, I'm trying to remember your other question that you had. Um, what was something else you'd asked?
I, I was just, I would just like to see our traditions more addressed.
And on the traditions, uh, you know, Chairman had mentioned that our memorial dinner is gonna be coming up this weekend and our children are encouraged to come and learn. Learn how to, you know, do our stuff, learn why we do the way, what we do.
I was thinking like even, I think all of our children should be able to go to college. Free. I do. I think that we should be able to set up a fund, not, not through the government, not through, but through the tribe. Where our children are guaranteed, you know, as long as they kept a certain grade average or as long as they volunteered so many hours to the tribe. Or, you know, something like that, they were, would be guaranteed. You know, college, college education.
Oh, uh, we did announce this at the monthly business committee meetings uh past week, but we have put together a tuition reimbursement plan for tribal member uh employees. So there's a couple requirements that they will have to hit and we're ironing out the finer details of it, but there will be, you know, GPA requirements. Um, but.
Is that a grant or is that through the tribe?
No, it, well, the, the tribe's gonna be paying for it. It won't be the government, it won't be grant. So we will be paying for it. The only things that, we only have a couple of things that we ask for in return, kind of like what you said. You know, we're gonna go ahead and require that, and we encourage people to go get their college education, but we would like you to come back and work a minimum of two years for the tribe. Yes. So um, this is gonna, this is a program that we put together through Downstream and uh, and it's something that we're pretty excited about. But uh, it's there. We're um hammering out the finer details on being able to get that completely rolled out, but, but it is, it is fresh.
Thank you.
All right. I have six more questions from Zoom and one person wants to speak. I know I don't have the authority for this, but you might need to take a break after these, cause I have several items that need batteries replaced.
Oh, okay.
It's going a little longer than usual. All right. First I have Connie Moore. She's wondering about travel assistance to Joplin or Miami for medical needs such as dialysis?
I think that is, it falls in line uh again with the eligible uses. Where did she say to?
Uh, she specifically said Joplin or Miami.
Joplin or Miami. Um, we'll have to look at that depending on what those stipulations are for the mile radius. But to piggyback off of that idea, I would like to see a transit system connecting Quapaw, Baxter, Galena, Miami. Maybe some type of circular route there uh that we could provide to our people.
Next I have Brandon. Uh, he brought banking as well, but he's also wondering if we could diversify even further. Wondering about a Quapaw insurance company, further nursing and manufacturing. And then I have a Michael Matthew who is also wanting to get more scholarships for unmet needs, assisted living with nursing care. He brought up a HUD youth care program for teaching construction, trading jobs. So we can then have go into our construction company. As well as further programs for cultural and language and a summer school for children for learning this. Uh, he also won, oh wait, no, this is Brandon, sorry. Brandon is wanting to know if we can add internet service to our utility assistance. Alicia is just wanting to know if these laptops you spoke with will be for anyone or just people within 50 miles? I missed that conversation apparently, but I will say as a person in the IT sector, I don't foresee many opportunities to purchase electronic equipment in the current environment. If anyone is not aware, there is a chipset shortage. Even us in the government sector are having a hard time getting a hold of electronics right now. So I would just say don't be optimistic on that in the immediate future. All right. Alicia King had another question. There it is. Oh, no, that was Alicia King. Brandon. Sorry, I'm looking for Brandon. He named himself Galaxy S21 5G. There he is. He is pushing for a per cap. He said he's wondering if we could just have it equally divided by 70% going to all tribal members. And then Melanie Shawnee wanted to speak. But I am not finding her. If you still want to speak, Melanie.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Uh, my name is Melanie Shawnee and I wanted to talk uh in regards to the um drug rehab that was a part of the earlier discussion. And ask that uh those of you on the business committee consider it not just being a rehab, but possibly a three or four phase unit. Because I was uh involved in helping a tribal member um go into rehab. And it was my first time to ever encounter anything like this. And I did not know all of the steps that addicts have to go through before they can get into a program. And uh, for example, when they say they're ready to go, I would hope that we could provide a detox unit. Because if, if you don't take them when they're ready, then there's opportunity for them to change their mind and back out of it. And then the other thing is uh to have a doctor on hand to do the referral or the hepatitis testing, whatever testing you would have in place. Um, that's a requirement before they enter um the, the rehab. And then of course the rehab and then finally um incorporate culture into, well, into the rehab. And I, I know that Osage Nation has a really successful rehab for men and for women, separate of course. And they incorporate culture and it really helps. My dad, as a recovering alcoholic, always said you have to replace that addiction with a, with something. And that's why he made dice and he did um a lot of jewelry and different things. So the, teaching them cultural things, I think would benefit addicts. And then the fourth thing, I apologize, is um maybe a sober living uh opportunity for them. So that we see them from start to finish. And provide as much success as possible. And that's all I wanted to say.
What was the last part? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
The uh sober living.
Okay.
So we're living. And you know, a lot of times people have to leave the area in order to be successful. I don't know if we could uh partner up with other tribes. I think Chickasaw Nation has a very successful rehab. Uh, one of my students and his mother went there. They allow your child or children to come under, within a certain age of, an age range. But he went with his mother and it helps the parents a lot of times if the child can go with them. So that they see that child, know they're working for the good of that, that child and the family bond, a family unit.
All good ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Davis and I would just like to piggyback off of some of Melanie's comments there. One of the things that um we see pretty regularly at family services is when we do have individuals that have situations, just also trying to return back to the workforce. If we could develop some sort of training program, help them re-enter the workforce, because there is often challenges that prohibit them from being just, whether they have felonies and just haven't even been in the workforce to retrain. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Is now a good time for that break?
Um, break or conclusion? If we, if we'd like to prolong it just a couple minutes, give another opportunity for anyone that may be sitting on an idea or wanna generate another topic for discussion. Or were you like pretty serious? Like we're about to, the batteries are about to go kaput? Sorry, Michael. Uh, at this point, I'd like to give a round of applause to Michael. With our uh to get the presentation up and running and he gave us some fits for a little while, but we overcame and uh, he does a really great job for us and all the offices here and the departments here. So we appreciate him.
Testing.
I don't think it's on. Broke it.
I guess some of our funds will be going to replace microphones.
Testing, testing.
Okay, Jerry Montgomery again. I've just had another suggestion. If we could maybe um, I was on the Economic Development Committee that we used to have. And then John did away with it. Cause I know we had a million dollars in the fund that came from Oklahoma City and they did the, all the stuff down there. But I'd like to see if there's a way of maybe, you know, re, reinventing the committee or whatever, you know, re-establishing uh Economic Development Committee. So we could talk about things that we need to do for the tribe businesses to, to do. I know that uh Rodney Spriggs and Art Cusot, uh Tamra, myself, I don't remember who else was on there. That I thought, you know, we never hardly had any meetings. I don't know why, but only had a couple that I can remember. But anyway, cause there's a lot of ideas out there for new businesses that we could bring and present to the committee. See if guys could look at it. I'd had an idea a long time ago about uh making caskets, Native American caskets, made out of cedar and then put, you know, um Indian material, penaltine material or something in them. And then marketing to all the area general homes at a reduced rate or whatever, but for tribal members. But just an idea that I just thought the Economic Development Committee is a good committee that, that we should look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
The mic is not broken, by the way.
That's good. Save some funds. Anyone else?
Brendan Fisher would like to hear your, the B C's thoughts on what can be done to help right away.
Yeah. What is the question?
Brendan Fisher is wanting to know what your thoughts are, what can be done, writing note, of what can be done to help right away. Want to know what your thoughts are.
Um, so to me, this, this evening um has been a interesting exercise. Um, to hear a lot of feedback. Um, you know, for some time now, we've known that there's going to be some type of allocation that comes to us. Uh, to be able to see that now as a concrete number. Um, it makes me hopeful. Um, because as Secretary Treasurer pointed out, um, it's, it's not an argument or dispute uh amongst us that we'd like to see uh some type of allocation payment to each individual. And most likely, uh, high probability that that's what it's, that some of that is what's gonna happen. Uh, maybe not all of that. Um, I'd like to see is where we do some type of portion, portionality of those funds, uh, because I think there's been a lot of great ideas that's come from the audience as well as Zoom. Not just in the short term, but also for long term. And I think that's what's significant here is um with this money, it seems to be geared more towards the long term. With the CARES Act funding, it was more emergency response. Um, and this with the American Rescue Plan seems to be more long-term infrastructure. What are we doing for generations to come? That's the way that I look at it. And other B C members may have their own stance and perspective on this. Um, but I think tonight by us having this discussion, having these questions, having these issues um put to us, I think it's generated a, a really good conversation around uh some of the issues that we see on a daily basis that's impacted us. Uh, and also part of the process is going to be within this next 60 days. Uh, there's going to be room for comments and suggestions as to how the final rules are whenever they do come out. So I'm gathering this information. I'm taking, I'm taking my notes as best I can. Uh, and then we're probably gonna compile all of these notes and put our heads together, but then also provide uh that feedback to the federal government uh through the appropriate channels. And that's going to be going into the decision that's coming down the pike for the final uh rule that's set for us with requirements and eligibility, that kind of stuff. Um, so I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that, those are my thoughts. And anyone else can chime in?
I also have a John Shipley who'd like to speak.
Yeah. Hey, board. So kind of going back to Melissa's, what Melissa was expanding on. Why could, can we use the funds to expand the, the medical benefit to include that kind of stuff? I don't think that's included in the medical benefit now.
Yeah.
And I don't think the medical benefit's been expanded on a while. I mean, that would help the whole tribe. I'm just curious. I mean, could that be, could the money be used to help expand what the medical benefit is now from what it is now?
And I'm going to say, based off of everything I've read in a hundred and thirty-four page guidance, there's nothing that says we can't do that. there's nothing that says we can't do that. But that is the question. That's if it's a short-term versus long-term thing, um, sustainability is always going to be a question.
Um, yeah, the long-term would be great. I mean, the long-term would be again beneficial to the whole tribe. That's ultimately the goal, right? Right? To be beneficial to the whole tribe and to make sure everybody's helped where they need it.
I just, uh, get back to the point about using some of this money to, uh, go towards our youth, educate them, maybe, uh, send them to some training or show them what jobs they have within our tribe with these casinos and stuff where we can get our younger people on these jobs. So it'd be tribal folks working for their tribe. We're like, he's got a son that's going to be graduating in a few years. Maybe he might want to do something. But I think a lot of this money needs to go to our education with the youth. To let them see what they could do. And I know you've got to work your way up to that, but with this training, they could, they could be the ones that's going to be running this show. I just think that's, that's what some of this money needs to go towards is get our youth involved in our tribal governments, our casinos. That way they have something to work for. Teach them while they're in school and like Bill said earlier about, uh, language preservation. I watched them, I went, my boys went to school at Stroud. Sack and Fox has had a person that they paid to come in and teach from freshman year until they're senior. I'd like to see us get somebody to come into Quappa or any of these other surrounding areas, have Quappa members where they can learn. From freshman, even junior high, let them start then. And that was one of their electives as a foreign language. So they didn't have to take Spanish. They took sack, sack box. They went and taught my boys a little bit. I mean, they don't talk at none, but I know.
Appreciate it. Any other topics, ideas? Have an idea? I know you got all kinds of ideas. I am. Okay. Did we talk about it? Okay. Well, um, anybody on the Zoom?
Only one additional comment is from Mrs. Bear. She's wanting to know if we can extend the funding on IP as the higher education to help with internship and externship. Again, I'm going to interject here that there's a chipset shortage. So in mass buying of any electronics would be difficult at the moment.
I think we can definitely look into that. Um, you know, it's a consideration for the eligible. One of the eligible issues where these funds can be utilized. Um, to me, that fits that criteria. I'd like to give everyone an opportunity to, oh, we gotta take her. We gotta take her. Mr. Henry Elliott.
Henry Elliott. I, uh, Joe, I'd like to see like, uh, people to tutor our kids all through the year. You're up, your kids could be paid, they'll be paid living for all through the summer, all, all the time. But seniors, tutors and just being a friend to them. You know, and helping. I know back in high school or grade school and stuff, if they had special ed, I'd be in another class, not because I was dumb. Because I was a bashful. I wouldn't ask the question. You've got kids up there right now, same thing. They're smart, but they're not going, they're not going to shout out. If you either have the older child, you can tell them, hey, it's all right to stick up for yourself. We put pedagogy. Really needed.
So just, uh, kind of like a tutoring slash mentoring program? Okay.
And they get paid for it in summer. You've got to have summer players for the kids to work, the next month. Thirteen-year-old kids can't do anything that they run high. You're going to work. Which we have something for that too, for them to do. They could tutor. But it's worth it. All the kids at all levels. And all, everything we're doing today starts down here, not up here. We're all dummied out now. Young kids.
There's no hope for us, huh?
There ain't no doubt there was and there will be, yeah. But yeah. Start down there low. I had, you talked about your language classes. I had my little granddaughters in the third, third and fourth grade, fifth. Raised right here, right here at Grove. They're taking Cherokee language. They went down to Palisade and won the whole time. Probably the class that they, they took in class and it's good. So education, that's it. You've got to break the cycle. You've got to break the poverty cycle. Living in a poverty cycle that people don't really realize. And they, they think that's as good as they can do. And another thing, get into education, vocational education. Everybody's not meant to go to college. I went to old, old Morgan State, Oklahoma State Tech right at the high school. Uh, I grew up there, got a better sight on what was going on. Had to live for myself. But, uh, vocational education is, is, that's what I'm now. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Laura Rollins. I have to piggyback on what Henry's saying because we've talked about this a little bit. Um, I'm a teacher, so obviously education is important to me. But, um, when he was talking about, uh, we were talking about preserving culture and heritage and he was talking about a mentoring program. Obviously preserving the culture and heritage is going to come from people who are more older, more experienced and have had it passed down to them. He's wanting a mentoring program. I also know that I teach children who are not going to do anything unless a carrot is dangled in front of them. And that's what I'm telling John is that, um, obviously the people who know all of this deserve to be compensated for their time and knowledge. I think that's important. Their, um, but with the money it says you can do that. But for the kids also learning it as part of what Henry would like to do, a, almost like a buddy system. Creating almost like a team or a pen pal signup program. I don't know, a buddy system of teaching. Um, because I know that I would, me learning something like that would work better one-on-one. Or some students, they're not, they would be less embarrassed than in a large group format. Uh, because learning something that's new or foreign can be overwhelming and intimidating and not wanting to speak aloud, or especially when it comes to language, that can be really hard, especially if they have a reading problem. Or, um, and I see it a lot. They can't read at all. So, um, but dangling a carrot such as this, a little incentive would be nice to, for them. I'm just thinking in terms of that. So.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say something a little bit that, about that cultural, uh, side of it. Um, here this past year, we have buried a lot of people. This, um, I've been a big part of that. And we're having a shortage of helpers. I can say that and be honest. Um, our, we've got a group of guys and a group of cooks. And I know a group of people that come and help out, but, um, we're having a shortage of people that would, that can come and help. Um, and there's, there's a lot of reasons for that. There's, you know, um, where you live, you know, you know, um, just being able, being able to come and, uh, put forth that effort. And I think it's where we're short on our people. If we could just have people show up and support our families at that time, that's where you're going to learn, um, that side of it. And I, I mean, I could, me and my brothers, I'm sure there's cooks, Linda, Debbie, Ron, all of our people that come together and work in the kitchen and how about the fire and all that? You know, if you want to show up and, um, say, hey, I want to help, that is your firsthand knowledge right there. And that's where it's going to start. And it's as easy as that. And, and it's hard to, kind of like Henry was saying about being shy. That's me. I, I was, I grew up that way and my uncle catfish. And me and my brother, that feather in that cedar bag, that bundle and it just kind of took over for me, you know, and I had to do it. It was, you know. But if our young people could show up, if your parents could bring them to these wakes, these memorial dinners, um, going to church upon the hill, you'd be surprised, um, how excited they would be about that, even though it's a funeral. It's, they've been a part of something. And I think that's what they want. But it's got to start with the parents. Bring the kids and then it just grows from there. That's how I learned. Grandpa led me around with him everywhere with, and I just, I got to see firsthand knowledge. But, um, I'm here anytime I can take phone calls or whatever. If anybody has any questions, I'm sure Linda, Debbie, all these people who do help here, we, we'd like to have some help. And it's not like we're begging for help, but it's a good way to learn, learn your culture that way. And, um, I'm sure, I know Joe has some, um, plans for a cultural building possibly. Put that out there yet, but, um, well, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of ways that we can learn. Uh, it's going to be firsthand knowledge. It's, it's, it's hard to learn over the computer. Some of these things, but I mean, it's possible. But I'd like to see more people take interest in being there and supporting families that way. That's, uh, part of our culture right there is caring and sharing. So. That's all I want to say on that. But anybody would like to learn firsthand, just, uh, you can get ahold of me, my brother Sean back there. Everett Bandi, um, Joey Gives Water, Corey Scott, you know, we kind of take care of things uh, when we're asked to, um, the cooks, Linda and Anna McKibben, Dina Ray. Well, there's, there's many more, but I'm sure they would appreciate your, your call and they'd be more than glad to help in any way.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I might actually break it this time. We'll see. All right. So this is just an suggestion for funding. It seems like education, preserve, preservation of our culture is a concern at the moment. We're also trying to combat homelessness after the wake of this pandemic. One of the problems all Native Americans have, we especially, is that a lot of our youth are leaving. We do need further education. And as Jeremy pointed out, we're running low on the people available and willing to participate. Now, this is just a start, but we're wanting to start businesses and so we're going to need some aspirational unskilled labor that are trying to get skilled hopefully. And just people who want to work for us in the local area. So combining your intent to build a some kind of transportation network to the local cities and, uh, starting to have elder housing nearby. What about creating some apartment complex for people who want to come back here, the youth, or maybe even younger adults who need an education? And then we can make sure there's transportation to the local colleges and trade schools. And maybe have some kind of participation with the Title VI so that they get to interact with their elders, know more about our culture.
So we did just get recent funding from a grant. A $2.3 million grant in order to, uh, enhance tribal housing. Um, uh, I think that it's specifically slated for, uh, building homes, uh, locally. Unfortunately, this is another radius issue, but, um, you know, we, we have had the first phase of our elder housing here in Quappa. Uh, we have a couple of homes that are still available, um, and there's one or two, um, that are still available. Um, but we are looking at, uh, housing for, uh, young professionals, younger families, um, and individuals that would like to come back to this area and, uh, either get their foot in the door with, uh, a new budding tribal business or any of the ones that we have that are well-established here or to work for the tribal government itself. So, um, we do have some, some housing initiatives in the works for younger tribal members that are seeking to come back to the Quappa area. I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it'll be an apartment complex, but it, but we might be looking at individual homes, affordable homes. So, um, but we're going to try and make it, uh, family-friendly community, looking at things like uh, playgrounds, splash pad, community pool, um, you know, uh, everything that we're going to need, um, in order to build good, sustainable, um, community here. And so, uh, it's definitely something that we're working on. Uh, we're in the early stages of it, but it's, it's kind of the utmost importance to us. Hopefully, um, there will be some additional, um, assistance that we can get from some of this funding to help with that. Thank you.
Let's go. We have a sir asking if we can start a Parks and Recreation Department.
Gives me a lot of concern if it winds up anything like the television show.
Gives me a lot of concern if it winds up anything like the television show. Um, could Sarah be more specific on the parks and rec? The intent would be or what the responsibilities are?
Let's know if there was entity for overseeing public parks such as skate park and splash pads.
Saying if we were to build a public park and splash pad, if there would be a park and rec department over that said splash pad? I'm not sure about that, but I can say that we've taken steps to uh, create our own fish and wildlife agency. That's something that's in the works right now. Uh, to better secure and protect all of our resources within our jurisdictional boundaries. And um, we're applying for grants right now to do, uh, perform the study for that task. And again, we're still in the works on that. So that's the closest thing I could think of when addressing the parks and rec question. Yeah, anything can happen.
So the 27 million, is that in a, in the tribal account where there is content of interest? And if so, there's a tribe that is supposed to say, come to the tribe, and if so, um, is that going to be under guidelines of the federal government?
CFO?
He said no, no to my question and noting. So it is. So it's not. Okay, so it's, I know I didn't, I'm not saying that it's not safe. I'm just asking if we're here to discuss, right? Okay, so you're saying that it's only earning a couple hundred dollars? So it's just on a, it, it's just in any general, like an account that? But that money goes, it stays under, under federal government.
I guess just to add some clarification on that, I'm looking at this and then I think on that, any of these funds right here, assuming that you kept them all intact for a whole year, they generate about $3,400 in interest for an entire year. Uh, in an interest-bearing account. And we know that not all of those funds are going to sit there for an entire year. They'll ultimately be utilized. So I guess just to add further clarification.
I think that's one of the restrictions too, that's included in the, in the guidance, the interim guidances. Putting it in a pension type fund or any type of high interest-bearing account of sorts. Yeah, CDs, money market accounts, that kind of stuff. I think that's uh, one of the restrictions for the funds. Ally's getting hungry. Uh, does anybody else, does anybody else have any questions, concerns? Anybody else on the Zoom?
This is probably a question more or better answered by our environmental farmers market. But Melanie Shawnee would like to know if we have any of our original heirloom seeds, and if not, she'd love to see them sent off for some USC bank and community garden, keep you gardening.
We already have that program, Melanie. Please apply. You can get those heirloom seeds right now, I believe.
And then Brandon, he says, it's great that we're expanding higher education for non-travel employees. It was discontinued when he was in graduate school. And he mentions a certain amount of debt he has accumulated from his graduate school.
Fill him.
Sorry, I'm trying to translate his message.
Debt forgiveness? Is that what he's asking? Similar to like a federal government uh, employee where if you work for 10 years, your uh, student loan debts get either minimized or cleared completely forgiven? Is that?
Okay, okay. That he, he has made it simple. He's wanting to know if we can expand funding for graduate students, not strictly debt.
I'm going to go ahead and out on a limb here and say, yeah, that's what we're working towards regardless of these funds. There should be some pretty big announcements coming for general council. Aaron, did you have a question? Okay.
Hungry.
Just, just to kind of wrap, wrap things up here. We're going to make this information available um, either through our website or our media. Um, because I think this is very good information. Everybody should have this information. Um, I think it's generated a lot of useful discussion. Uh, some good ideas has been shared uh, by all of us in this room, as well as the participants from Zoom. Um, I don't think that this is going to be the last opportunity for comment. Um, because if you're like me, you're going to be driving home and realize, ah, I should have asked that question, or why didn't I think of this? Um, please reach out to us. Uh, any, any BC members uh, will be happy to take your questions or concerns or ideas regarding this. Um, again, uh, there's not going to be any action tonight taken. Um, but I think we've had an overall really great and useful discussion on how we can better serve uh, the needs of our people uh, for generations. So uh, if there are no further questions or comments, I'm going to go ahead and uh, ask Michelle if she could close us out in prayer.
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this time that you've allowed us to come together and, Lord, and discuss this. I thank you, Lord, for all those that made the effort to be a part of this and um, great input that we did have and discussions and but I know that each one of us up here, Lord, that our hearts are truly um, in our very best, Lord, to um, of our people. And we are very blessed to receive this funding. We are just truly um, excited about the participation from all of our members, Lord. We just ask to go bless this funding, that it can go as far as, and make it stretch. And um, just again, thank you, Lord, for those that need the Zoom or to be here in present, in the presence and pray whether you do the prayers and each one of us, if we travel home and we thank you for all the many blessings that you give.
Have a motion to adjourn. Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.